And then it went through the AMATS committees for final approval in June of 2020. So what staff did is took the MTP and made it into the 2040 LRTP. Between October and November of 2020, while it was just getting ready to come before this body, 155 comments were received and responded to, and you can find those that were submitted as part of the packet. Additionally, two comments were received after the deadline, and staff did not have enough time to respond, but we attached them anyways for your review. And I will like to point out that in the comment response summary, you'll see that there are a couple of comments that were too large to fit into the document, so they were attached as is for you to review them as well. But staff still responded to them if possible. I think that's about all I had. If you guys want to know more, let me know. Thank you.
If people have questions or comments, if you want to type into the chat or just state your name before you speak, we can be a little loose since this is just our work session here. I guess to kick things off, I had a question regarding your plans and goals, the goal section. And I'm not sure if this is a question or more so just a comment. Trying to go to the exact page. Do you know what page you list the goals on? Sorry.
Sorry, just a second. Let me go ahead and try and find it for you. Should be starting on three dash one.
Yeah, I guess my question was in regards to goal number five. I am not against anything in goal number five, but I feel like it was lumped together a lot of different areas. And I feel like, for instance, in goal number five, five A, where is it? Minimize, it's five F, minimizing adverse impacts on existing communities such as neighborhoods, and the goal of equity of all users and social justice. I feel like that one kind of gets lost because it's lumped in with all these other areas. And so more so just a comment that if that's something we're going to do, I think that maybe it needs to be pulled out as a separate goal. But again, I feel like we're far enough along in the process that we're beyond that. But I guess if I had a more of a long-term question is if you could point out some of the projects that you feel actually hit that goal specifically? Like, we have this whole list of projects, and I couldn't quite tell when looking at goal number five, which hit those ones of promoting social justice or equity. And so that's, again, one of those reasons where I just kind of feel like that one got a little lost in the project. And maybe it's the fact that we're not doing certain development that would ruin the character in those neighborhoods, and that's the issue. But that's kind of an overall, general comment that I had in looking through, that goal number five just seemed a little too broad.
Thank you. Yes, and that is something that can easily be addressed for future updates. And it's one of the things we're, I know people don't like hearing that, but we can't get it right 100%. So when we get comments like that, it's something we can look at. And one way we're looking at helping to address that in, for the AMATS side of things, is when we're looking at updating our criteria selection for projects, is helping to pull out some of these things a little better, so they're easier for people to see. Or when we're trying to identify which project the goal helps with, we put that in the document as well. We did have a separate thing, which I don't have with me, that shows what project helps with what goal. And I think it's in the project table. And I'll try and go to one.
It's in the project table. I think what would be more helpful is you have all this room there that you could have listed, like, three A, three B. So you're showing which ones it specifically hits. And again, I think, I'm not saying this is a, I don't want anything redone about this, but that was just one thing, is it was hard to figure out where it was matching up specifically with goal five because it was so broad.
So there is one project I can specifically point out that helps with goal five, and that is the ADA improvements at the Rabbit Creek overcrossing on the Seward Highway. That is to redo, because right now there's steps leading up to the overcrossing, so it'd be redoing to probably put ADA accessible ramps in there. So that helps meet goal five. And I know that we've gotten comments about that project to remove it as it's unnecessary, but as you can see, it does help us meet with that important aspect of it. So I agree with you. I think one thing we need to look at is adding in that information, say, what goal or goals the projects help us to achieve, because we have to do that for our performance measures as well. So it's nice to have that interlinking between them, so we can see it a little easier. So, yes, I agree. Thank you for your comment.
And I see Radhika Krishna on the queue.
Yeah, thank you. I have a question in sort of a different direction, which is that I'm looking at the table in Chapter Seven, and I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit as to, I see obviously the recommendations for short-term and then long-term projects. Could you talk a little bit as to how we're supposed to read those illustrative projects? And sort of how they would be considered for future inclusion and future MTP drafts?
Yes, thank you. So it's going to get a little technical here, so I apologize, but hopefully I can make it simple how it's following along. So for the MTP, it is required to be fiscally constrained. So what it's supposed to do is take a look at what funding do you anticipate over the next 20 years, and then break it down into two 10-year segments. It's part of the federal requirements that we have to do that with. The LRTP itself has no funding constraint to it, but we just carried that forward because we assumed most people would want to see a fiscally constrained document instead of everything under the sun possible put in here. So what we do is we break them out into the law, the short-term, which is 2018 to 2030, and then the long-term, which is 2031 to 2040. So when we're looking at projects and looking at the fiscal side of things, if we don't have enough money to fund a project that has been identified as important or needed, we put it in the illustrative category. So it's basically a holding pot for projects that have been identified as important, recognize that there's not enough funding yet, but we put it in this illustrative pot in case additional funding becomes available during, you know, the four years that this plan is here, or five years that the plan is here. And an update comes along and says, you know, these projects in the illustrative were there, additional funding has come available, let's move them into the plan because they were identified as important, and see if we can move forward with them. So I hope that helped answer the question.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thanks for presenting here, Erin. I had a question about the performance measures. What significant changes have happened with this version prior to the previous version? Specifically, I'd like to know if anything, if there's more focus put on multimodal transportation measures to measure success.
So are you talking about the 2035 version versus the 2040?
That's what I was thinking, I guess, really just see what direction, what changes have occurred in these performance measures in regards to those things.
So the 2035 had some performance measures in there, but they were very road-specific. And that was mostly because that's what our, what the AMATS modeling can handle, is pretty road-centric. For the 2040, there are performance measures you'll see in there, and those come down from the Federal Highway Administration. Those are requirements that AMATS has to look at and incorporate into its planning process. There are some measures in there that are more non-single occupancy vehicle-focused, more non-motorized focus, but not a whole lot of them. And so someone may ask, why don't you have more? Well, the thing is, is that we have a requirement to use the performance measures that the feds want, and then if we have any additional staff, time, and resources, we can add our own measures. At this point, AMATS doesn't really have the staff or the ability to go above and beyond what you see in the document right now, but we're looking at ways to incorporate ones in the future. The issue we've always had with non-motorized performance measures is data. I'm sure you've heard or you know that data for non-motorized users is very limited throughout the municipality of Anchorage. I understand that is something that is being worked on. AMATS is there to help where possible, you know, to provide funding for things if possible or anything else. But until some more of that data is collected, it's going to be harder to put in a lot of additional measures. Because you've got to recognize, when, you know, AMATS specifically, I'm not sure about the muni itself, but when you put in a performance measure, you are tying yourself, saying, we will get this done in X amount of time. And if you don't get it done, then there are actual repercussions that can come from the feds potentially in not getting the performance measures done, met your targets, et cetera. So in this instance, the 2040, we took a pretty conservative approach to the performance measures, so we could see what it was like to develop them, you know, what impacts they have, you know, how does it change our process, and then what improvements we could make to them. We didn't want to put a whole bunch of stuff in there, get everyone all hyped about it, and then not actually end up using them. So, thank you.
Actually, so the one question I had was, I know that the Vision Zero project is primarily a data generating product, you know, looking at different aspects of safety through data. Is any of that data being referenced with this document at all?
I'm sorry, there's some talking going on in the room. Can you repeat what you're saying? Maybe, can you say it a little louder?
Okay, Vision Zero, it's a project, I'm sure you're familiar with that. It's really a exercise in gathering a lot of data, safety-related data to non-motorized transportation. I wasn't sure if any of that data and any observations it's made, has that affected anything with this plan?
I hope I understood what you were talking about. It was a little loud in here. I'm assuming you were asking about safety data for non-motorized users.
That's right, through Vision Zero.
Yes, so for Vision Zero, we did incorporate it as best we could in the document. So what we did is we actually took a look at Vision Zero and the specific network, the high, the corridor network that was developed as part of Vision Zero, the map that showed the high injury corridors. We took a look at those and incorporated them into our scoring and ranking. So if a project fell on one of those corridors, it was given a higher rank. In terms of non-motorized, it was not a lot for us to be able to do, because we were running into a problem, because we have a non-motorized plan that's currently in development for AMATS. And so the MTP didn't want to start making recommendations that were counter to what was in that non-motorized plan. So what we did is we fell back to the current existing bike and ped plans that Anchorage has, and used projects from there to recommend what projects for the non-motorized for the MTP. So you'll probably notice that a lot of the projects that are in the 2040 are pretty similar to the 2035, minus ones that were done. Our hope is that the next update, the 2050 update, will be able to take the non-motorized plan update that's underway, which did utilize the Vision Zero data extensively, is my understanding, and then draw from that to help inform what projects for non-motorized will be included into the 2050 MTP update.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Strike?
Thank you. I may have missed this, but why isn't Girdwood included?
So AMATS only covers the Anchorage Bowl, Hillside, Chugak, Eagle River, and Akutina area. It does not cover anything south of the Potter Marsh Way Station. And my understanding is Girdwood has its own transportation plan as well.
And does that include then the route between Potter and down to the flats or to Girdwood itself? They're separate?
I'm not sure. If you're asking about if it's included in the Girdwood, I don't know what's included in the Girdwood transportation plan. I apologize. I only know for us.
Fair enough. And tonight, we're going to hear public testimony on this topic. What can you, what do you feel, if there's public testimony to the negative, what do you think the hot button is?
I think one of the things that you're probably going to hear is that there is, that the document was not developed in a way that covers everything that the public wants to see. So the hard thing about this is AMATS is the group I represent, we are the transportation individuals that are federally funded. So we have a specific set of goals and objectives we're supposed to meet based on federal requirements and everything like that. And so our goals and objectives that we develop, our process and everything like that, is developed for that specifically. And so I think members of the public have been concerned about that, because it may not adequately address the concerns they have for their communities or the communities that they represent. So I assume you're probably going to hear from individuals who want to see pretty significant changes to either projects or some of the goals and objectives that are in the current plan itself. I will point out, we did look at all the comments we got, and there were a number of comments that we recommended for the next update to be used as kind of a starting point for that document update. So if somebody wanted a new goal and objective, we said, you know, we're kind of beyond that point right now, because we've already developed the goals and objectives, we've already used those goals and objectives to develop the entire plan. So for the next update, let's take your recommendation for a new goal or a new objective, look at it, and see if we can start fresh, more or less, or add it in at the beginning instead of at the very end.
Thank you. I think that helps a lot. In fact, I would encourage that the statements and statements that you just have made would be an excellent segue or introduction that you should make during the course of the public, as we lead into the public testimony. It might, it might lead, it might lend to diffusing some of the angst that, if we have any, on that topic. So I appreciate what you said, and I understood it. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Sorry, we're currently, just for members on the line, we have an individual in person, and so I'm going to be addressing them. Sorry, we are currently in a work session with just the Planning, Zoning Commission members. The public meeting will be at 6:30. However, I believe, and I think Laura is looking into this, that the public comment period will be addressed over the phone. But again, this is just the work session. We have not started the Planning, Zoning Commission meeting.
So to re-
And then, moving on, are there any other questions for the Planning and Zoning, from the Planning and Zoning Commission staff for the rest of this work session?
To answer your question, I was actually restricted from providing phone testimony. I emailed the municipal clerk three days ago with regards to this meeting, so I understand that you are-
I will, I will talk to you outside in the hall before we start our main meeting. We aren't currently at the meeting. It sounds like we don't have any other, any more comments from the commissioners. And so when we canceled, or not canceled, when we finish our work session, then I will go and step outside and talk to you in the hall to make sure that we address, if you have public testimony, that you're able to call in. But currently, we are still in our work session with just our staff, and I don't want to disrupt their time. But I will talk to you once we're over.
I understand that you're coming out.
No, I understand. It's confusing.
I understand that you're coming out. We're pretty busy.
All right. Any other questions for staff while we have them on the line? All right. Thank you for your presentation. We will take a break until 6:30, at which point the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting will start, and that is the end of the work session. Can you hear us? And more specifically, can we hear you? All right. I think everyone might be on the line. I'm going to do a roll call before our roll call. Greg Strike?
I'm here.
Andres, next to me, Jared Gardner.
I'm here.
Aaron O'Quinn.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
I'm here.
Jim Winchester.
I'm here.
Brian Looney.
Here.
All right. Now we'll do another run-through of the roll call once we're on the record. All right, the meeting has been called to order. And first thing on the agenda is calling the roll. Commissioner Strike?
Here.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Here.
Commissioner Gardner?
Here.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
Here.
Commissioner Krishna?
Here.
Commissioner Winchester?
Here.
Commissioner Looney?
Here.
I am present, and Seth Anderson is excused. Moving on, next item of business, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Spinelli. Seconded, I'm taking Commissioner Gardner's comment as a second. Are there any objections? Seeing no objections, that is approved. Moving on to disclosures. Commissioner Strike, any disclosures?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Nothing.
Commissioner Gardner?
No disclosures.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Krishna?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Winchester?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Looney?
No disclosures.
And I also have no disclosures. Since we have nothing on consent agenda or the regular agenda, moving on to our public hearings, before we move in, I'm going to do the, speak to the procedures by which the public may speak. The procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meetings is as follows. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups such as community councils and PTAs will receive five minutes. Individuals will receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendations to the assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. Moving on to case 2020-0118, can we have the report?
Thank you. This is a proposal to rezone part of an existing R4 multifamily residential district in Midtown to be three general business and R4 multifamily residential with special limitations. As proposed by the applicant, the special limitation on the existing R4 district would require a minimum of 32 dwelling units per net acre. The proposed rezoning area includes most of the existing South Park Estates Mobile Home Park, which was established in the 1950s, 60s, and consists currently of 66 residences. This is a residential density of about 29 dwellings per acre. The surrounding zoning districts are predominantly high-density residential and commercial districts. Figures one and two in the staff report show maps of the proposed rezoning area, and figures three through 10 provide photographs of the existing conditions in and around the rezoning The applicant held a community meeting during the regularly scheduled Midtown Community Council meeting on June 10th, 2020, in accordance with municipal code. And from that meeting, the applicant provided a community meeting summary that identifies two primary issues from residents and attendants, on-street parking along West 31st Avenue, and removal of the existing mobile homes in the South Park Estates Mobile Home Park. On the question of parking, the applicant clarified that any new development after the rezoning would need to address parking throughout the entire site, including West 31st Avenue. Regarding the removal of mobile homes, the applicant conveyed that the approval of the rezoning itself would not affect ability of mobile homes to remain on the site. However, redevelopment plans would eventually require the removal of existing mobile homes. The full community meeting summary is available in the application in attachment number two. 563 public hearing notices were mailed for this public hearing on November 12th, 2020. One written comment was received in opposition to the rezoning from a member of the public that was received today, so that's actually in supplementary packet number one. The commission should have a copy of that. The Board of the Midtown Community Council passed a resolution approving the proposed rezoning on October 20th, 2020. However, the neighboring Spinard Community Council approved a resolution opposing the rezoning and submitted comments detailing that opposition on November 18th, 2020. For the council's opposition, the smaller community councils, their opposition to rezoning is primarily related to conformance with Anchorage 2040 land use plan and loss of housing through the proposed B3 zones. The department believes that the proposed special limitations on the B3 and R4 zones discussed later in this report will address the majority of the smaller community council's objections to rezoning. Council's full set of comments are available in attachment number three. For reviewing agencies, there were no objections to the proposed rezoning. For findings, the Planning and Zoning Commission may recommend approval, and the assembly may approve rezoning, if the rezoning meets all the following criteria. One, the rezoning shall be in the best interest of the citizens of Anchorage and shall promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. And then, so provided it complies with the conference of plan, the rezoning would be in the best interest of the citizens of Anchorage and promote the public health, safety, and general welfare by allowing the development of a high-density, of high-density housing and new commercial spaces in a horizontal mixed-use environment at the intersection of two transit-supported development corridors. And as noted in the report, horizontal mixed-use would refer to a mix of commercial and residential uses located in close proximity but not in the same building, and this is in contrast to vertical or stacked mixed-use. Criterion two, the rezoning complies with and conforms to the conference of plan, including the conference of plan maps. This rezoning, as proposed, does conflict with the conference of plan. Specifically, the proposed B3 general business zones do not comply with the underlying land use designations in the Anchorage 2040 land use plan. Figure 11 in the report outlines the implementing zoning districts that would usually be required for a combination of land use designations and growth-supporting features in each of, each part of the rezoning area, and compares those of the districts proposed in the rezoning. Figure 12 subsequently provides a map of the Anchorage 2040 land use plan, designations for the rezoning area. for the rezoning area. As shown in figure 11, the expanded B3 general business districts are proposed for locations where the Anchorage 2040 land use plan designations would normally call for the R3A mixed-use residential district or the R4A multifamily mixed-use residential district. This inconsistency raises, excuse me, two issues: loss of housing units and the lack of design standards for pedestrian-oriented mixed-use environment. Considering the Anchorage 2040 housing targets and loss of residential units, to mitigate that loss of housing through this rezoning, the applicant has proposed a special limitation that would require at least 32 dwelling units per acre for development within the proposed R4 SL zone. Planning Department analysis shows that the proposed B3 zones could result in the loss of about 2.5 acres of residentially-zoned land, which would then amount to the loss of about 48 dwelling units when the minimum residential density requirements of the implementing R4A and R3A zoning districts are considered. To make up for this loss, the proposed 2-acre R4 SL zone is proposed to require at least 32 DUI dwellings per acre. Including the special limitation just outlined for minimum residential density on the proposed R4 SL zone is a recommended condition of approval. Looking at pedestrian-oriented design standards, the Conference of Plan land use designations and gross-supporting features underlying the rezoning area require a walkable pedestrian-oriented environment. The R3A and R4A zoning districts have design standards that require this type of environment; however, the proposed B3 zones do not have any such requirements. So in order for the proposed rezoning to comply with Anchorage 2040 land use plan and to satisfy criterion 1 of this analysis as well, development in the proposed B3 zones must be required to adhere to pedestrian-oriented design standards that provide a quality horizontal mixed-use environment in the rezoning area. This can be achieved by requiring an administrative site plan review for development in the proposed B3 zones that checks for compliance with site-specific shared infill design principles, and those are from the Anchorage 2040 land use plan. Figure 13 in the staff report is a matrix showing how the shared infill design principles apply to the underlying land use designations in the rezoning area, and figure 14 provides a full set of those principles from the Anchorage 2040 land use plan. Applying a site-specific selection of the shared infill design principles to the proposed B3 zones through the admin site plan review is a recommended condition of approval, and the proposed special limitation would read as follows: Quote, "Development in this zoning district shall receive administrative site plan approval that reviews the development for compliance with the following adapted set of shared infill design principles from the Anchorage 2040 land use plan. Parking for buildings located beside or behind the front facades facing the development site's highest classified official streets and highways plan street frontage. This standard may apply to no more than two street frontages. Shared parking solutions among neighboring uses wherever possible. Pedestrian connections between the development site and adjacent Northern Lights subdivision, block 10. Building orientation and scale that frames a welcoming walking environment along the development site's highest classified official streets and highways plan frontage. Welcoming walking environment would include elements such as more street-facing windows, wider sidewalks and/or walkways, pedestrian-scale lighting, landscaping, and seating. This standard may apply to no more than two street frontages. Windows and entrances of active uses such as stores, offices, or living spaces address the street and public realm along the development site's highest classified street frontage. This standard may apply to no more than two street frontages." Finally, these special limitations do not require the front facades and primary entrances of residential units to face the highest classified official streets and highways plan street frontage, provided that the other development features contribute to a welcoming walking environment on that street. And that's the end of the proposed special limitation language. So with these recommended... with the recommended special limitations on the new R4 SL and B3 SL zones outlined in the sections above, the rezoning would comply with the Conference of Plan and the Conference of Plan map. Criterion 3, the rezoning is generally consistent with the zoning district purpose and the requested zone and the purpose of this title. As the applicant states, rezoning is consistent with the purpose of the requested zones. The proposed B3 zones will be situated alongside Benson Boulevard, a major arterial, and Arch Boulevard, a minor arterial, in Midtown. This aligns with the purpose of the B3 district since, per Anchorage Municipal Code, the B3 district is, or quote, "is intended primarily for general commercial uses in commercial centers and areas exposed to heavy traffic. These commercial uses are intended to be located on arterials or within commercial centers of town and to be provided with adequate public services and facilities," end quote. By requiring a higher level of residential density than might otherwise occur, the proposed R4 SL zone conforms to the purpose of the R4 zoning district. Per Anchorage Municipal Code, quote, "The R4 district is intended primarily for multifamily and multi-story residential development. Multi-story development in the R4 districts is intended to be applied in areas well-served by transit and/or arterial streets and by supportive commercial services near the major commercial and employment centers in downtown and Midtown," end quote. Criterion 4, the rezoning is compatible with surrounding zoning and development. The rezoning would result in the expansion of existing B3 zoning districts and require higher-density residential development in part of an existing R4 zoning district through a special limitation. These expansions and the new special limitation would remain compatible with surrounding zoning districts. The special limitations on the proposed B3 districts recommended in this report will facilitate a pedestrian-oriented environment that would integrate with surrounding development. There are some lower-density single-family residential uses adjacent to the rezoning area, but the area consists primarily of duplex, multifamily, and commercial uses that are compatible with both the existing and proposed zoning. Criterion 5, facilities and services are capable of supporting uses allowed by the zone or will be capable by the time development is complete while maintaining adequate levels of service to existing development. The rezoning area is located at the intersection of two arterial roads, as mentioned, Arch Boulevard and Benson Boulevard. It is served by a frequent transit route, people move Route 10, and a standard transit route, people move Route 35. The existing Anchorage Water Waste Florida Utility Public Sewer Mains serving the rezoning area are in good shape, although what public water lines would likely need to be extended to serve new development resulting from rezoning. The rezoning area is within the Anchorage Police and Fire Service areas. Criterion 6, the rezoning is not likely to result in significant adverse impacts upon natural environment. Since rezoning would generally be expanding or modifying existing zoning districts that already form large parts of the Midtown area, significant adverse impacts are unlikely to occur as a result of rezoning. The rezoning area encompasses Brownfield Site that has experienced surface-level contamination and has completed a targeted Brownfields assessment as a step in mitigating these The rezoning itself will not affect the status of the Brownfields Site; however, development facilitated by the rezoning may make cleanup of the contaminants more economical. Criterion 7, the proposed rezoning is not likely to result in significant adverse impacts upon adjacent land uses, or such impacts shall be mitigated through stipulations. The rezoning will not introduce any significant adverse impacts to adjacent land uses. Special limitations on the proposed B3 zones will require these expanded commercial areas to be reviewed against design standards to promote a pedestrian-oriented environment. In addition, the higher residential density required under the proposed R4 SL district will result in levels of density that would have been allowed in the existing R4 district prior to rezoning. Criterion 8, the rezon does not extend or exacerbate a land use pattern that is inconsistent with the Conference of Plan. As originally proposed by the applicant, the rezoning extends a land use pattern that is inconsistent with the Conference of Plan. However, as discussing criterion 2, the proposed special limitations on the proposed B3 and R4 zones will ensure that the rezoning is consistent with the Conference of Plan. Finally, criterion 9, the rezoning shall not result in a split-zoned lot, and it does not do this. With that being said, the department finds that approval criteria are met and recommends approval, subject to the conditions outlined on pages 18 and 19 of the staff report. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Strike?
Yes, yes, thank you. I'll flip submitted, but just to clarify, block 6, which adjoins Benson Boulevard, will it have or be allowed to have any direct access to Benson, or will it be only through the two adjoining streets, Bering and Chachaco?
That's not clear at this time. I believe that would only be determined when and if development occurs on the property.
So who owns Benson? Is that state or is that city?
That would be a state roadway.
So they didn't comment on that aspect?
They did not. Since the rezoning doesn't entail a specific development proposal, they had no comments.
Okay, so we can... I'm sure the petitioner is listening, so let's go ahead and I'll wait also and pose that question to the petitioner, and they can address it during their presentation. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
Well, thank you, through the chair. So I just... I had two questions. The first is about site plan review, and so as I understand, the staff report, site plan review would only be required for the B3 lot, or lots, and not... the B3 zones and not the R4 SL zone, is that correct?
That is correct.
And so my understanding is that the implementing zoning district, the R4A, which all three of these lots would typically be required to be rezoned to, would require the residential component to be constructed prior to the commercial component, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and so with this, you know, not having the R4 SL as part of that site plan review, there's not really any mechanism to require that residential component to be completed first, is that correct?
That's correct, because in this case, the only required residential component of the rezoning area would be in the R4 with special limitations district.
Okay, so I just wanted to be clear that that is something that would be going away by not following the land use plan and the implementing zoning. And then with regard to the dwelling units per acre, so it says there's 66 mobile homes on all three parcels currently. And this may be better directed toward the petitioner, but, you know, I would imagine that those are not, you know, those are family-sized dwelling units, they're multiple bedrooms, and this would require, I think it's 32 dwelling units per acre. That could be as small as a studio apartment, is that correct?
Yes, the dwelling units do not have any minimum or maximum for number of bedrooms or any of that.
Okay, okay. Okay, so I think that's just... I wanted clarification on that, I think that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes, thank you. I had a couple of questions that I think are related, just to make sure I understand the density issue as it relates to these different blocks. And the first question is, what is the minimum density for R4? Do you know? My fan.
The R4 district does not have a minimum density that I'm aware of. The R4A district does, and that's 20 dwellings per acre.
Sorry, what was the number for R4A?
The R4A is 20 dwellings per acre, and the R3A, while we're speaking about that, is 15 dwellings per acre.
R3A is 15, okay. And also, I guess, really basic question, just to confirm, the block 6 is currently zoned R4. The block 10 is currently zoned R4 as well, and what is the current zoning for block
Block 9 is R4 and B3.
R4 and B3?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other question I had was, looking at the land use plan for the designations for these blocks, it looks like the city center and the main street corridor do, in some circumstances, if I'm reading this correctly, permit B3 zoning with a CCO overlay? And I gather that's a commercial center overlay, but I don't really understand what that is or what the process is like for having that in place. Can you just give me a quick overview of kind of what's intended and what purpose that serves the CCO overlay?
So I don't know... I don't know a lot of the details about the CCO overlay. I could look shortly in the code book to brush up on that, but my impression is the CCO overlay is intended to be more of a neighborhood scale or, you know, walkable scale, require those kind of developments to occur in the B3 zoning district, whereas without the CCO overlay, that type of development would not be required in the B3 district. And I believe that would be achieved through a typical rezoning process.
Okay. Do you know... Are there any CCO overlays in the city that are existing?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Oh, I guess I will... Commissioner Krishna?
Sure, through the chair. I also have a couple of questions that are quite similar. One is just trying to, again, sort of understand those density numbers. So my... Correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like block 10 is 2 acres, so with the SL that would... with 32 DUI required with the SL, that would be a total of 64 units that would be required for block 10, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And under current... just speaking to sort of the R4 zoning that's currently there for block 6, block 10, and then it looks like half of block 9, what would be the number of dwelling units according to current code that would be possible to have in, let's say, any one of those blocks?
There is no specific minimum or maximum for the current zoning in terms of residential density.
All right. And then I just have a follow-up question, which was, I understand that the targeted area rezon process was mentioned a few times in the packet. Could you speak a little bit as to how that interacts with the land use plan map and 2040 and all the goals there?
So the 2040 land use plan identifies several areas in municipality for targeted area rezones, which would bring the area... priority areas more into conformance with the 2040 land use plan and result in one of the goals being more residential units in the right places. And I believe this is one of those areas that was... would be incorporated by that targeted area rezoning set of priorities, but this would... just to clarify, this is a private, of course, private rezoning application, but the goals within it, or the rezoning... end result of rezoning is hoped to come close to those goals in the targeted rezoning.
Thank you. And I just have one more question, which is that it also looks like this is within a reinvestment focus area. Does that... could you just speak to any impact that might have?
So reinvestment focus areas are identified conceptually in the Anchorage 2040 land use plan, and areas that are candidates for that are considered as such by the 2040 plan, but there are no officially designated reinvestment focus areas currently that would require assembly action. So the fact that this is within a potential reinvestment focus area, you know, is perhaps significant for some considerations, including infrastructure, rehabilitation, and cleanup, but there is no... nothing official in terms of this being an RFA in Title 21.
Thank you.
And I have a couple of follow-up questions along a similar line. How many dwelling units are currently on the site?
Right now, the staff report mentions, I believe there is 66 mobile home units.
And then, and how many dwelling units... If you're currently on the bridge and not speaking, you should put your line on mute just so that we can hear everyone. So as a follow-up, how many dwelling units will be on this site if it is approved with that minimum dwelling unit?
So the minimum number of dwelling units with the 2 acres and the 32 DUI would be 64 dwelling units. That's the minimum requirement, so there could be more that occur. The B3 zones do allow for residential development, although it's not required, and the development of that property, the R4 SL zone, would be free to provide more dwelling units if that made sense.
All right, thank you. Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yeah, so kind of following on your comment, Commissioner, Commissioner Krishna's comment on the 64 dwelling units for the 2-acre lot. So Colin, is that... that's per net acre, right? 32 per net acre? And so it's a, you know, we're to have, I don't know, to improve the streets and make them wider and...
know, improve the streets and make them wider and put sidewalks in and reduce the acreage because of different things like that, that would result in a reduction in units, is that correct?
Yes, it could result in a reduction of units, depending on the extent of the improvements, you know, and how wide the streets were, that is correct.
And then I had one more kind of, this kind of bigger picture question, the R4A is the implementing zoning in a lot of places in town, and I, you know, I know just from being in the community that there are other projects that are kind of in the works and that sort of thing all over town in these districts, and what's kind of, you know, why aren't we looking at, why aren't we having to change the land use map like we have in the past, when we're, you know, why aren't we, why aren't we having to change the comp plan in order to make this change, is it because we've mitigated the impact of the rezone by having no special limitations?
So, you know, we feel that, in treating the development site as a whole, so all three parts, all three blocks, it's quite a large land area, and the department felt that treating those as a cohesive development site offered a little more flexibility and, you know, possibilities than a smaller parcel potentially would with just looking at the land use plan map versus the rezoning, and having those, you know, those one-for-one translations, in this case, the idea was that if you consider the interior block and increase residential density, then having a commercial in the outskirts would make more sense, considering it again as a cohesive whole, so you have horizontal mixed use and a development site that ties everything together.
Okay, I understand that, but we're not, so, but we're not requiring a site plan review for the residential component, only the commercial component, so why was the residential component excluded from the site plan review requirement?
So that's primarily because the site plan review had something, had a lot to do with, well, everything to do with the pedestrian-oriented and walkable design standards versus, that are required on the outlying sites that would have been required by the implementing zoning districts, so R3A and R4A require pedestrian-oriented standards such as a certain number of, percentage of windows, you know, a certain maximum setback or building orientation, and so we went back to the 2040 plan and worked those into the, as special limitations proposed currently for the B3 zones, and in order for that, to make sure that development complies with those standards, we felt that the administrative site plan review was the best way to do that, whereas there is really no, there aren't really any special standards being applied to the interior block other than connections to and from the exterior blocks nine and six, so there really no, there's really no design standard to review, it's just, when it goes the building process, the zoning would require a minimum residential density, and that's more or less it.
Okay, thank you.
And I have one further question, was the petitioner or staff able to go back to the community council after the special conditions were added about increased, the minimum dwelling units per acre?
So the applicant actually originally proposed the, they can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm almost certain that they brought that special limitation to the community council meeting on June in Midtown, the one that was noticed, they can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm almost certain that that was the case.
And so with that special condition, that was still their main concern, was the loss of housing units?
In the community meeting summary, that's what was described as one of the two major comments.
All right, thank you. Seeing no one else in queue, can we hear from the petitioner?
Yes, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right, I also added my video there, so you can actually see me, my name's Sean Devenham with Devenham Properties, I appreciate your time this evening, commissioners of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I'd like to leave three minutes at the end, if that's all right, but as you know, I'm the owner of the land located just off the corner of Arctic Boulevard and Benson Boulevard, currently known as South Park Estates, our way of brief introduction, Devenham's been doing business here in Alaska since 1959 when my parents moved here, Devenham Properties is a well-respected local real estate development and property management company, known here for quality developments and integrity, you know, we believe that this rezone will be a significant benefit to Midtown Anchorage, and when eventually developed, will serve as a catalyst for redevelopment in the area, we're actually quite excited about this significant step and are excited to move forward with it. Let me quickly relate how we got here and where we're going, we acquired the property in 2005, after the acquisition, we quickly realized that there's three kind of major things wrong with the site, one, the property had significant environmental contamination on the site that needed to be addressed before any new development could occur, second, the park was built in the late 1950s and it had failing utilities, in particular, the water and sewer lines were disintegrating, and the DEC was requiring us to replace the water and sewer lines, and then number three, the property really needed to be rezoned and replatted in order to move forward for its next iteration of its kind of life. Over the last 15 years, I have personally worked on all three of these endeavors, it has been a hard and grueling work, these past years, we have worked with geotechnical engineers in municipality of Anchorage, the Anchorage Department of Environmental Conservation, and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, to determine the best course of action to remediate the contamination, I'm happy to report that in the last month, we came to a settlement with the company that actually caused the contamination, and with the settlement and reports generated by the EPA, we're ready to really remediate the contamination going forward, as for the utility lines, we can't really do anything further with them, we spend about $40,000 every year trying to kind of string them along for another year, the DEC is requiring us to replace these lines, however, in order to do so, this would require removing the manufactured homes, and once the homes are moved, they wouldn't be able to be placed back in their current arrangement due to the current land use regulations. Really, this kind of leads to, hence, the need for a rezone, the park as it currently stands is at its end of its useful life, given the facts of the past over years, I've engaged the Anchorage Planning Department to come up with a rezone that really makes sense for all parties involved, there was a lot of collaboration that took a long time, but I feel that the end result that you have before you tonight is, it's a great product, it's a good collaborative result, it allows the commercial space to be where it is most effective, and at the same time provides ample space for much-needed housing, as a side note, I'm a multifamily developer, that's what I do for a living, and I'm excited for the prospect of eventually developing multifamily housing at this location, getting the land rezone replatted and a plan for remediation of the contamination is a great first step. Now, if I can, I'm going to try to share, I'm going to try to share a map. So there is a little bit of talk of what is currently zoned and what we're proposing to zone, so just to be super clear, this lot here is currently zoned R4, that's Block 6, Block 10 is zoned R4, and then Block 9 is half, this half here is zoned R4, and then this half that's actually on Arctic is zoned B3, so kind of the net of what we're looking at, what we're trying to accomplish here, is we're trying to rezone Block 6 and half of Block 9 to B3, and so in order to accomplish that, we worked extremely hard with the Anchorage Planning Department to come up with special limitations on property that's not actually one of these two, that actually enveloped this property, which is Block 10, and this property, which is half of Block 9, we brought those into the rezone so that we could put special limitations on them that would make it suitable so that Block 6 and half of Block 9 could be B3, so I just think that that's an important kind of distinction to understand that we're actually bringing in a lot of these various land formations that are part of the rezone into it, in order to be able to make the B3SO work for all parties, and I think that this is a good, a good way to do that. So, in conclusion, I just really appreciate your time, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you might have, there is a couple of questions out there, and I'm more than happy to answer those, so with that, I'll turn the time back to you, thank you.
Thank you. Turning to the commission, I see we already have a question from Commissioner Krishna?
Thank you, through the chair, thank you for sharing that, I have a question for the petitioner, which is just that you've heard us talk a little bit about the 2040 land use plan map and how that shows that the implementing zoning district for the blocks abutting Arctic and Benson would be a mixed-use district, either R4A or R3A, could you speak to why you feel that isn't appropriate, or why that doesn't meet your needs, and instead B3 would be preferable?
Well, so I feel that with the proposed SLs that the planning department has proposed there, that it'll provide, you know, like Colin said, we felt that it met the comp plan, the 2040 comp plan with those additional SLs, and so I believe that as well, I think that those additional SLs that are being provided to the B3 are sufficient to make this a great, a great development.
Commissioner Krishna, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I, maybe just a quick follow-up, which is, could you, could you just share as, would the sort of plan development or the development you're thinking of doing not be implementable with one of those districts, and instead that's why a B3 would be necessary?
Well, so, again, half of Block 9 is already B3, and so we brought that, we didn't have to, but we actually brought that into this rezone in order to have an entire block be the same zoning designation, because when we go to replat, you can't have a divided zoning district, and so we really felt like the best zoning district for these is really B3, and then we added the SLs in order to make sure that we met kind of the intent of the comp plan, which we do, so for, in this particular development, we feel that B3 was the best option going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
Oh, yes, Mr. Devenham, through the chair, one thing that I don't think the SLs addressed is the timing of the residential development, you know, typically with the R4A, the residential development would have to come first before the commercial development, and I understand that there's a number of reasons why that's not always the most practical way to develop or do the property, but could you maybe speak to both the timing for the development of the business districts and the residential districts, you know, vis-à-vis one another, and then also speak to the intended, you know, type of housing and density of housing that your organization is planning for the R4SL, or the proposed R4SL, you know, insofar as it, you know, what's there now, 66 trailer units, mobile home units, multiple bedrooms, you know, what will be put in place on this property?
Sure, so we don't, we don't have a design yet for the six acres, that's yet to come, our main focus was right now is to get the zoning and the plating and the contamination kind of in place so that we know what we're working with, to take it to the next level of implementing the design, because a lot of times, as you know, there's special limitations that get added that'll change, change things, so we want to get those established, and then we'll move forward with the design, as far as a timing of what will be first and what will be second, our preference is really to kind of leave that up to the circumstances that we find ourselves when we get to the point of developing, we don't want to be hindered one way or the other, if it makes sense for the commercial to kind of go first, then we'd just go ahead and do the commercial, and then second, we would do the multifamily, but really, at the end of the day, I'm a multifamily developer, that's what I do for a living, it's not commercial, and so my intent is to build multifamily at a minimum at those interior two acres, and then hopefully, and we'll see what transpires with market conditions, we're obviously in a terrible market right now, and are expected to be for the next couple of years, but hopefully, I would like to bring that multifamily into the commercial areas and really kind of mix them up a bit, so the question that you asked me was what kind of multifamily are we talking about, we do pretty dense multifamily housing, for example, we have a project that we're looking at doing downtown this summer that has potentially 40 to 80 units on a half an acre, so that's pretty dense, dense housing that requires some parking garages and such, is that what we would do here, you know, probably, we wouldn't probably go quite as dense, I mean, that's almost 160 units per acre, we probably wouldn't go that dense, and the units tend to be a little bit smaller on the smaller side, so it is a different type of unit compared to what's there, these manufactured homes, as you said, have multiple rooms, and a lot of times contain entire families, and what would be going up is more of a typical apartment, as opposed to the size of a manufactured home.
Commissioner O'Quinn, did you have any further questions?
No, I just, I wanted to thank you for the info and appreciate your time.
Yeah, you bet.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes, thank you, yes, I have a question for the petitioner, and actually, it's a follow-up to Commissioner Krishna's question, actually, there's some background noise here, but essentially, I'm just trying to get clarification, as far as you, she asked, is there a development, or type of development that you can't do with existing zoning, that the reason for this whole rezone, that's what I don't really know, is what are you trying to do that you can't do with the R4? And I'll put my mic on mute now.
Sure, so there's just a quite a bit more flexibility with the commercial space in a B3 zoned as opposed to an R4.
I'm going to pause you real quick, I'm sorry for the petitioner, I'm going to pause, because we are apparently celebrating someone's birthday on the line, and so while we figure out what's going on with the background noise, or if we can get them to stop, if you have someone singing "Happy Birthday" on your line, that probably means you need to mute your phone, we're trying to figure out if we can, is everyone on our line? Yeah, everyone on our line is muted, sorry for the disruption, petitioner, if you can start again answering that question, everyone, I'm sorry for the disruption.
Yeah, you bet, so the question was, R4 commercial versus B3 commercial, and there's just a lot more flexibility with B3 and what you can do with commercial on B3 than what you can do with R4 commercial, and so that is really the impetus, again, we already have half the lot zoned B3, and so we're just looking to extend that current zoning of B3 to the rest of that zone, and so it's flexibility really is to answer your question, it gives us much more flexibility with commercial space.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Yeah, sorry, through the chair, my question is, if you get Yeah, sorry, through the chair. My question is, if, if you get a B3 or two B3 developments moving forward, is, are you going to do, take care of the environmental contamination and cleaning up the entire three sites all at once? Or is there a chance that the R4 portion will stay trailers and two new B3 buildings will pop up?
So the way the park runs, you could only close down certain portions of the, if, if your question is, can, can we close down certain portions of the, of the, of the park in, in stages? And you could only do that if you first closed block six and then closed block nine and then at the end, closed block, I'm sorry, block six, block 10, and then block nine. So block nine is where everything ends. It's, it's, if I get rid of block nine and the trailers that are there, then everything else has to go. So that's kind of the, the segmented way that we could potentially go. The, the overwhelming bulk of the contamination is found on block six. So block six will probably be the first place to have the trailers removed because we need to get those off in order to remediate the contamination. And it's also the first kind of segment of if you're removing kind of trailers in a, in a segmented way, that's kind of the first, first phase. And like I said, the, you know, 95% of the contamination is there on block six. And so that's why that would, that would go first.
Seeing no one else in the queue, turn to public comment. I believe we have three people calling in with phone testimony.
Hi, is this Margaret Offe?
Yes, it is.
This is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for your public testimony on case
I'm sorry, I'm going to mute this because I'm listening to it. I'm sorry, what was that?
Yeah, so if you can mute what's in the background, that would be awesome. We are calling for your public testimony on case 2020-0118. I see that you're representative of the Spinnard Community Council. You'll have five minutes to provide your testimony. If you could state your name for the record, you can begin.
Oh, right now?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. My name is Margaret Offe. The last name is spelled A-U-T-H. Do I just give my testimony?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Can they hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yes, hello. My name is Margaret Offe. I am speaking for the Spinnard Community Council. One of the reasons that the Spinnard Community Council takes such interest in this matter is that all of this area used to be in our council up until about 15 years ago. We're very, we're, we're open to everybody, but we take a very keen interest in protecting residential housing and everything because it's being lost at, at such a clip around the city. And so we, we still maintain an interest because the Midtown Community Council is mostly commercial, real estate owners and business property owners. So we're trying to bring some balance to this proposal. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous because I haven't testified on the phone before, so you'll have to excuse me. The community council's main concern is the loss of housing that has happened in Midtown and in Spinnard in the last 20 years. Included in the packet is a letter from the Spinnard County Council detailing how another trailer park was taken out about 20 years ago. That was a loss of 211 units. And at that time, they had promised to, to put that housing somewhere else and it has never happened. As you can tell, more and more housing is being lost or residential land is being lost due to rezones. You can go on Spinnard Road and there's many parking lots right now that all used to be R3, R4. So we're, we're very worried that at a time that we need 21,000 units according to the comprehensive plan, that we're losing more housing land. And what I'm asking the commission, and I, I believe that Mr. Debenham has the, the highest of intentions, but we are worried that there are enough units that will be built to at least mitigate some of the problems with losing 66 housing units. As one of the commissioners pointed out, probably some of those units have entire families as opposed to single, you know, residential units. And we're, we're just worried that, that where those people are going to go, where the housing is going to come from in, in the future. As our letter states, this doesn't conform to the comprehensive plan, the 2040 comprehensive plan. And it's frustrating to see time and again that there are these properties coming up that do not conform to the newest comprehensive plan, the one that's supposed to be taking us 20 years into the future. And at this time, the Midtown area seems to be the liveliest part of town. And we're making all these plans for not just commercial and business, but the, the Anchorage Library brings a lot of people in. There's been a lot of work done to improve the, the Cuddy Park for all the businesses around there. And the archival land, they're hoping to put some mixed-use development there. But there's not a lot of residential, residentially zoned land in the Midtown area. And at the same time that they're trying to deal with the traffic congestion, and they just started with Dow Engineers, another study about how to relieve congestion in the Midtown area, we're talking about more commercial, but we're not making it so that people can live close to where they work or where they shop. And I'm, I don't want to kick this can down the road again. I want us to think seriously about how we can integrate people closer into town so they're not driving 40 miles into Anchorage on a daily basis, so that they're closer to where they, they work and play and eat out. And I think if we're going to have a vibrant Midtown, it's important to have people living there and being a part of Midtown. And so I want the, I want the commissioners to, to bear that in mind as they go forward, that you think about what is, what is the future going to be like in Midtown if we only have a few standing parcels where there's opportunities for people to, to live?
Thank you.
So I, I think I've, I've said as much as I could. It's more or less reiterating what we said in the letter. And I-
Thank you, Ms. Offe. I'm going to let you know that your time is up and I want-
All right, thank you.
I want you to stay on the line just in case there's any further questions. And I specifically just want to say, you had nothing to worry about, about your telephonic testimony. It was some of the best testimony I've heard in a while, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
I believe we have a question in the queue from Commissioner Looney.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, you're right. So you, you did a wonderful job testifying. The question I have is, is, are you familiar with the special limitations that are included with the staff? Has that made an impact on, on your council's view of this proposed rezone?
Well, I, I believe that what would, we would be asking is to please have the special limitations as the staff report states. I, I think that it is something we can live with more easily if we thought that, that there, there's going to be a minimum of units to halfway replace the lost units. But yes, I, we're aware of those. And that is important that we have the special limitations if you go forward with this rezone.
Because it appears that with the, the, the special limitations requiring at least a minimum of 32 dwelling units per acre, I would think that in one of those blocks, then you could put 64 units. And that's almost essentially what the, all the trailers, the existing units on the three blocks right now, I've been told, is 66. So essentially, the density of what would go back there would be more, more dense, I guess. But you, you could displace all those same families in these, in this proposed development.
Well, that's true. But, but that historically, there were actually more units on that trailer park. If, in, in, if it's correct of what's on the MuniZone site on the historical land thing, there was 81. So maybe some have been lost because people just moved their trailers off. But historically, there were 81.
Okay, thank you.
I see no one else with questions for you in the queue. I want to thank you for your time and we're going to move on to our next telephonic participant.
All right, thank you.
And Ms. Offe, before you go, I see that we have Robert Offe at the same telephone number. Are you able to pass the phone to him?
Yes, I was going to ask you because instead of you calling, I'll just pass it to him. Thank you.
Hello, this is Robert Offe. Is, is it okay if I testify now?
Yes, Robert, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. If you could go ahead and state your name for the record one more time, you can begin.
Okay, thank you. My name is Robert Offe, A-U-T-H. I'm a longtime resident of Spinnard. I've, I've been active in the community council for a long time, but I'm speaking on my own, personally. And basically, I am concerned about the loss of residentially zoned land that this rezone would, would allow. This is directly against the comprehensive plan. There, there is a, a housing deficit, according to the 2040 plan, of over 20,000 units. And we should be doing something to address that deficit. And, and this is a, this is a large parcel that's going to be completely redeveloped. And this would be a perfect opportunity to address part of that deficit and actually add housing instead of, instead of taking away from residentially zoned property. It's also going to be, this will also set a precedent for the future, especially in, in Midtown when there's redevelopment of, of large parcels. There's, there's no, there's no shortage of, of B3 in Midtown. There's, there is, it's probably got the highest concentration of B3 in Anchorage. And adding more B3 in Midtown does nothing to address any, any public issue. The other concern that I have is that there really isn't any plan of development. We don't know what is going to be developed or when or in what order. And so it's really hard to see how all of this is going to fit together and whether this is, this is actually going to be an improvement for, for the community. One other issue is that it's, it's, this whole development is very close to Arctic Benson Park, which is just to the south. There's really hasn't been any, any discussion about the effect of this development on, on that park. And so, so anyway, in short, I would just say that I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about the, the loss of residentially zoned property, both on this parcel and how it would-
Sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Offe. I just want to let you know that your time is up. I'm going to check in the queue and see if there are any questions for you.
Okay, sure.
Seeing no questions in the queue. I want to thank you for your time.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And we have one more individual wishing to make telephonic testimony.
Hi, is this Corey Hill?
Yes, ma'am.
This is the Planning and Zoning Commission. And before we get started, if you could mute anything that you have in the background, that would help us hear you.
Yes, I actually just muted my YouTube livestream.
Thank you. So Corey, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. If you could state your name for the record, you can begin.
My name is Corey Hill. I currently reside at South Park Estates in Unit 30. In my testimony, I would just like to say, given the current state of things with COVID, I don't feel like anyone should be having to worry about moving. As of right now, I believe one of my neighbors has at least six people living there with children. I don't know how they're expected to be relocated. There are many dwellings in this trailer court that have additions, legal or otherwise. I, I don't know how they're expected to move their trailer houses. Mostly, I would really just like to know, when will we be required to move our trailers? And when this date comes, will there be any financial assistance from the park owner to help us move our trailers? There's currently 66 dwellings in this trailer court, like we'll say multifamily dwellings. So it's like, okay, well, you go from 66 people per eight, or 66 people here to 32 dwellings per unit. I don't think that fairly compensates 66 families having to leave their home. And my final question is, how come block nine is only being zoned in half? Is the other half of block nine to remain residential? Or is the whole trailer court going to be eventually have to move due to the contaminants? I realize there's a lot at once.
I would like to thank you for your testimony. I believe the petitioner is still on the line. And so when they get back on, they have, they have three minutes remaining for rebuttal. And hopefully, they use some of that time to address those questions that you have because I know I would be interested in hearing their answers to your questions as well.
I, I guess, like, like I said, I said a lot, but really the thing that's bothering me the most is, is when will we, like a definitive date, when will be, when will we be required to move our trailers? And if and when, or not if, but when this date comes, will there be any financial assistance from the trailer park owner to help us move our trailers to different locations?
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
All right, that is all of our telephone testimony. At this time, if there are members from the public wishing to speak on this item, I'd like to remind you that you have to be speaking on case 2020-0118. Then you are free to speak now. When you testify, please state your name for the record.
Okay, I would like to request that I get five minutes as I represent a nonprofit for the state of Alaska, 1776 Alaska. Thank you.
My name is Niall Williams. I represent the nonprofit 1776 Alaska. I would first like to address that a lot of this meeting is going outside of the public view. view. So under the Alaskan Open Meetings Act, whenever there is a legislative body or someone that's going to inform the legislative body, the Zoning and Planning Commission, that it needs to be posted clearly in a standard spot where the meeting will happen, and that the public has to be allowed access. Now, this first one, 2020-0118, it's petitioned by Greenland LLC and Bearing LLC. Now, Bearing LLC is actually a subsidiary of a company that is traded on the Shanghai Chinese Communist stock market. Secondly, I would like to say that the meeting agenda and details were not available outside, physically in the room, or online. Next, I would like to address the final pages of this document after it was posted online. It's like Page 64. The affidavit of postings that were posted on 7/28 and signed by the petitioner, and also on 10/23, those were not properly posted, as was dictated on that affidavit of posting. Also, the findings in Number 1 state that this is not in the best interest of the citizens of Anchorage. Next, the U.S. government, according to the Constitution, as well as the state and local governments, are not to promote public health and public safety, but they are to promote the general welfare. This is not in the general welfare's interest. Next, I would like to address the fact that the trailer court has wells. Those are private water sources for the Anchorage citizens that live in that community, the 66 mobile trailers, they are on wells. So the Anchorage Water Utility has actually, quote, "tested it," according to the documents, the water efficacy multiple times. Each time, it is said that the water has a clean bill of health, those wells. Now, you want to put them on a public water supply that has arsenic, that has hexavalent chromium, and that has lead within the pipes. Next, I would like to speak of the fact that in Number 1, under your recommendations, Denali Fuel actually abandoned a bunch of diesel lines that are in the ground there. So to state that this would have no environmental impact when you come and you change around this land and dig it all up, it's obviously going to have a catastrophic environmental impact. Next, I would like to speak to the fact you're removing 66 residential units that might house, let's say, if there's average of three, all right, that's over 200 people that will be displaced. There's no stipulations for financial reimbursement for these people for the moving. Also, there is no guarantee in the document that you will actually stipulate that the petitioner will have to first build new residential units. Next, I would like to state that if it's a multifamily home that will be applied on this after the trailer parks are removed, that they have gender-specific bathrooms. So a bathroom for males and a bathroom for females, if they're in a public section, they should have gender-specific bathrooms, no mixed bathrooms. Also, I would like to speak to the street name Chichaco Street, or I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right, but it's actually a racist term against Caucasians. So I would like to petition that that, an amendment be added to remove that street name. Also, under Number 6, it speaks to the environmental impact, and I would like to add another amendment that the Army Corps of Engineers needs to do a full environmental impact statement on what will happen when this land is dug up. Also, I would like to say, under Number 7, whenever you add commercial properties near residential areas, it destroys the residential area's property value. So any additional property owners, residential homeowners in the area, their property values will be eroded, as is on their mortgage. Second, also, I would like to state that to violate the pre-existing agreements and contracts that are between these tenants that are trailer park owners and the trailer court, they cannot be violated by a new plan. And yes, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you for your time. I do not see any questions in the queue, so your time is up.
Thank you, madam.
Hello, I'm also on the board of 1776 Alaska Nonprofit, requesting five minutes.
We only allow one representative to be allotted the five minutes, because they speak on behalf-
Okay, and I'm also speaking on behalf of Infowars.com as a new syndicate and active chair member. So I request five minutes for the new syndication of Infowars.com for that aspect.
Are you a reporter, or how, on what behalf are-
I'm a news-
How do they authorize you to speak on their behalf, is my question?
I'm in the program of the Alaska chapter of Infowars.com.
And are you authorized, have they authorized you to speak on their behalf?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Along with Mark Begich, not Mark Begich, but Nick Begich, he's a biochemist, he's part of Infowars Alaska as well. Dr. Nick Begich. So what I've heard was from, to the best of my knowledge-
Sorry, you need to state your name for the record.
Oh, okay. My name is Dustin Darden, spelt D-U-S-T-I-N-D-A-R-D-E-N. I'm a lifelong resident here in Anchorage, Alaska, very familiar with the area of the proposed amendments to zonings. To the best of my knowledge, it seems the layout of this organization, there's a voting, it looks like there's a handful of people that vote, and I'm assuming these are municipal employees to the right side.
Correct.
Okay, so it's virtually the same structure system, and the gentleman that spoke in what this is about, it's a privately-owned company, but it correlates with the municipal's plan. And the municipal's plan is a crony capitalist, Agenda 21, depopulation, and supreme rulership of a hierarchy. The gentleman before me, Nile Williams, spoke on the water aspect, and how this is going to tie into the utilities. Currently, the municipality of Anchorage is dumping hexafluor- hexafluor acids, which is a byproduct of the mining industry, into our municipal drinking water supply. If these places are in fact, in which they are, in fact, on municipal wells, this would supplement the pineal glands of all users to the calcification of the pineal gland and the documented evidence of reduced IQs in developing babies as the mother drinks the fluoridated water. Also, this is, also, this is a control mechanism where the MLMP could, will, import their 5G radiation operations into the sidewalks, into the smart readers on the side of the house, the 480 volts that are, for their convenience, they can pick up these transmission usage of electronic waves from the roadway, but it goes two ways. They also have control of the high-radiated frequencies to the dwellers, which is how they are rolling out a radiation plan on the municipality of Anchorage. The municipality of Anchorage has been a target of a militarized weapon of 5G, and what is going on here is you have a municipal, a paid municipal group, who is directing or working with, in conjunction with this private organization, to promote control and to disregard zoning. The people who bought homes and live in these areas, they did this under, the understanding that this would not be changed. And if something so ridiculous as to changing zoning just goes willy-nilly to a closed-door meeting that's not really closed, it's actually open to the public, is completely unacceptable. And this is three blocks, they're talking about rezoning, but if you allow this, when does it end? When are we going to stand for America? And we're going to stop capitulating to this regime of global sympathizers, like the Berkowitz administration, now this fake, can't even say their name, mayor's administration, to complete control and tyranny. I urge the board to make an opinion that is adversary to this ridiculous New World Order, 2020 lockstep prison planet takeover, and take a stand against it. Because the people aren't, like I said, are not even allowed to speak. But to those who did show up, Spinell and Bailey and you, ma'am, I commend all of you who showed up today, because the largest amounts of property taxes that I pay for my property goes to the school district. And I went there today for a scheduled meeting, and not one soul showed up to an entire heated school district building to hold meetings on important subjects. So I commend all of you, you three, four, five, six, seven, eight, people who showed up, everybody in this room, even the security guards. But this is just what I'm saying, this is a control mechanism, and do not get the vaccination, it is deadly, they can't keep the animals alive. Any questions?
I see no questions in the queue, thank you for your time. I believe the petitioner has four minutes and 20 seconds remaining for rebuttal.
All right, again, thank you for your time. I'll answer a couple of the points I brought up. Some of them weren't directly related to our rezone, so I won't obviously address those ones. But as far as our residents go, we've met with our residents several times. They know, obviously, about this process that we're going through. Those that we have met with, we've committed to them that we give them a year notice, which is more notice than what is required in the muni-code. We've committed that to our residences that are currently there at the park, at this manufactured park. The real hard thing about this whole process is that the park is really at the end of its useful life. We're literally just kind of dragging the park along and just kind of doing the best that we can to extend the utilities and such. Like I said, we're spending over $40,000 a year just to kind of put Band-Aids on sewer lines and water lines and other utilities that are in this park. The park really doesn't have the option of moving forward in its current configuration, which really lends itself to this rezone. Again, I would say that with the special limitations that we have outlined here, that the planning department's put together a rezone package that does indeed, in my opinion, meet the 2040 comp plan, the intent of it, the intent of that plan has been met here. We're excited about this development, we think it's going to be a huge asset to the area, it's going to make it extremely nice. As far as housing goes, I hear the Spinell Community Council, I'm a housing advocate, I sit on several housing committees, I work tirelessly in the housing sector, I'm a multifamily developer. We develop multifamily housing, we're the only multi-market rate multifamily housing developers that's developed any housing in the entire bowl of Anchorage in the last 15 years, and that's the residences that north of, that we developed over off Northwood. So this is something that we're excited to do, we're excited to put multifamily housing here, and we're excited about that park. You know, currently, that park is a very deep down, we call it the heroin park, because there's a lot of nefarious things going on in that park, but we believe that in the future, it's going to be an awesome amenity, an awesome asset for our new development that we're putting in there. And we plan to feature that park as much as possible to gain access to the park and utilize it as a positive thing for our development moving forward. Other than that, I think I, oh, the last question was a question about an exact date, and we don't have an exact date. And the reason why we don't have an exact date is that we don't know exactly when we're going to redevelop, because obviously, we're not going to take the trailers off until we're ready for development. There are several factors kind of holding us back. Obviously, the economy right now is terrible, so we're not going to be pulling trailers off that land anytime soon. We've committed to give a year notice to our tenants, which we will certainly do. And as far as economic assistance at that time, we'll just have to come up with a package of what we think would be best, working with our tenants on that. So with that, I'll end my testimony, thank you.
All right, thank you for your testimony. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. My question is actually for staff, so if anyone has a question for the petitioner, I'm happy to let them kind of proceed first. But if not, I guess, I want to just return briefly to the density question, just to make sure that I have this clear. And so, a couple of quick questions. First is that my understanding of the proposed special limitation is that it would require a minimum density that would roughly equal the number of units that are currently there, and that would be lost. Is that accurate?
That is accurate in terms of the minimum, yes.
Okay. And then that minimum that would be required for the special limitation, is that also more than the minimum amount that could be developed under the current zoning?
Yes, under the current zoning, there is no minimum required residential density, so it would be more than what is there today. And it would actually also require slightly more residential density, even net, if you look at net acreage, than the R4A and R3A zoning districts would.
So it'd be slightly more than the current zoning districts would permit?
So the special limitation would require a minimum level of density that, where today is no minimum level of density residentially. And if you look at the implementing zoning districts, your R3A and R4A zoning districts, those require 15 and 20 dwelling units per acre, respectively, which the staff report mentioned would be about 48 dwelling units on the site. And so, the minimum amount of density for this rezoning would require more than, in terms of residential density, than the requirements with the implementing zoning district.
Okay, but could the current, under the current zoning district, implementing zoning districts, they could, though nonetheless, permit a construction that would have more dwelling units than the 62 or 64 we're talking about now, over these three blocks?
Yes, there would be no maximum density right now under the existing zoning.
Right, okay, thank you for clarifying that. And then just another question is, I can't specifically recall, and I think that gets to a question Commissioner Quinn asked earlier, and that's that I can't specifically recall, in my experience, although I could easily be wrong, doing a rezone to a zoning district that differs from the implementing zoning districts in the underlying land use designation. And are you aware of any examples where the commission has done that before?
I personally am not aware, no.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes, thank you. I have another question for staff. Just to kind of clarify the numbers, it's like a lot of this, a lot of our discussion today has been centered around housing or loss of housing, but just, it appears that there's essentially, if you put these three blocks together, there's a total of six acres, and there's a, currently, there's 66 trailer units there, so it's essentially 11 dwelling units per acre, is what's out there now. And the special limitations are going to increase that to 32 dwelling units per acre for at least two of the blocks. Is that a good summary?
So in the staff report, I believe there was actually a note, mention on Page 2, that the 66 residences would equate to a residential density of about- that the 66 residences would equate to residential density of about 29. Actually, you're right, I believe, because the zoning area was expanded. And this may be an error in my staff report. I think your number is correct in terms of the density after the rezoning areas expanded after the postponement.
So in summary, from 11 current to a minimum of 32 with the proposed limitation?
Yes, I believe so.
That's dwelling units per acre. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yeah, sorry, just a quick follow-up to make sure I understood that final point. So recognizing that difference in dwellings per acre, but we're talking about different acreage, right? The 11 would be the, the three blocks and the 32 we're talking about is just the one block 10. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions in the queue. Commissioners, what is the will of the body? Commissioner Spinelli?
In the matter of case 2020-0118, Greenland LLC and Bearing LLC request to rezone, I move to approve with the conditions listed in the staff packet.
Motion by Commissioner Spinelli, seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Commissioner Spinelli, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I plan to support the motion. I feel for the concerns we heard from the public about loss of residential zoned land. But it's all too often, we see sites zoned residential adjacent to busy streets that aren't necessarily ideal for residential development. So sometimes we, I feel we need to stray from the plan and the staff and the petitioner appears to have worked out a compromise. They got them to this point and I plan to support it for those reasons.
Would anyone else like to speak to the motion? Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. I, so I think I, I probably at the moment plan to oppose the motion. And I guess a couple of reasons. One, at, at some fundamental level, I don't, I don't think I really fully understand why we need to do the rezone to a B3, which is outside and implementing district for these particular designations. The petitioner mentioned kind of the need for more flexibility and I, you know, I recognize that. But my understanding of part of the intent of these designations is to limit the flexibility in a certain way so that, so that whatever's built is consistent with the designation. And I know that with the special limitations, there are some efforts to help mitigate those, those differences. But I, I think there are more things that go into the zoning districts than, than just what those special limitations address. And on a related point, to my mind, it's significant, and I, I might be misreading this, and I'd be happy to receive comments if I am, but for these designations for Block Six and Block Nine, which is the main street corridor and the city center, I read them as permitting R, B3, excuse me, if it's part of the CCO overlay. And that overlay includes a lot of other limitations and standards, including among other things prohibiting certain uses that would not be prohibited with the limitations that we're talking about here. And I'm, I'm just not comfortable that these limitations are adequate to fully implement the, the intent of the land use designations for these, these lots. And so I don't think I'm quite at the point where I could support the motion.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yeah, I thought, I second a lot of Commissioner Gardner's concerns. I'm also not in support of the motion at this time. Specifically, I don't feel like the special limitations address some fundamental aspects of the, the target zone, namely that the, the timing of the residential development. Specifically with this, with this parcel displacing housing with some sort of indefinite, you know, timing for, for replacing it on the site. I'm uncomfortable with that. And then additionally, the, the R4A provides a number of incentives, you know, to, to, you know, to encourage development, residential development and, and allow for the more profitable commercial development by incentivizing certain design aspects. And I, I don't really see where, you know, the special limitations have addressed that. I do encourage the, the petitioner to continue to work on this project and maybe, you know, it will be approved and they'll continue to go forward. But I'm very supportive of the project. I just don't think that this is the right way to, to go about it. You know, we need to accord fidelity to the comp plan and, you know, we need to either change the comp plan to address, you know, the specific site or the specific area, or we need to change the, you know, the R4A or R3A definitions. But I, I don't feel that the special limitations address enough of the fundamental aspects of the, of the target zones.
Anyone else wishing to speak at this time?
I will comment that I think one issue that I thought was actually a good thing with this plan was that sometimes in the past, when there is a rezone that takes place, there is that idea of changing the comp plan as well. And what I liked about this plan was that they created a solution where that rezone worked with the comprehensive plan. Rather than having to change that overall vision for Anchorage, they found a way to create a rezone that fit with the comprehensive plan. And so I think that was a very good effort on the behalf of staff. Additionally, I think Commissioner Spinelli hit the nail right on the head that a lot of time, development doesn't happen because the place doesn't, it's not appropriate there. And so part of what we as a commission have to do is find a way to make the planning lots encourage people to want to live there and want to build there and want to develop there. So currently what we had is 66 units that are not fully developed that could support in the future more residential units. And if what we want from the comprehensive plan is more residential units, we have to be working with these developers to get those done. And I think that this plan does that while taking into the needs of the surrounding area. Again, another thing that I think leads towards accepting this proposal is looking at the, where it is located in the city. It's right along Arctic Boulevard and Benson Boulevard, two of the busiest streets. If they're not adequately able to support B3, what area is? I understand that this isn't an easy case before us and it was one that I, I did have, I struggled with coming through. However, I think staff and the petitioner worked very hard to ensure that it would keep residential units in the area and that it would create a blend of business into those residential areas, which is what we want to see. Again, I think another thing that this plan did a very good job of that wouldn't work with the current zoning is having those limitations on the pedestrian oriented areas and how those would be developed. And so I think this is moving forward from what is currently at the zoning location. For all those reasons, I will be voting in favor.
Commissioner Krishna?
Thank you. Echoing Chair Bailey's comments in a lot of ways, I, I also found this quite difficult, but I think ultimately am in favor for some of the reasons mentioned here. I have to admit that I'm, I'm not sure I, you know, have entirely wrapped my head around why R4A or R3A isn't really doable. But ultimately, I, I do think that there is a substantial amount of B3 zones, land surrounding all of these parcels, which makes it a little bit easier to see that it's an appropriate designation or it could be, especially for the blocks abutting Benson and Arctic, which are next to B3 zones. So for those reasons and because the SL seems to preserve a lot of the housing, I'll be voting in favor. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing no other commissioners in the queue, call for vote. Mr. O'Quinn?
No.
Mr. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Strike?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
No.
Mr. Winchester?
Yes.
Ms. Krishna?
Yes.
And Chair Bailey? Yes. And that motion passes. I would like to thank everyone who testified at this item. Obviously, all of your comments were very much needed and all the extra insight was very helpful. Before we move into case 2020-0134, I am going to set us up for about a four-minute break, just because I know I need a bathroom break. Also, before we get into case 2020-0134, I believe that there actually is a disclosure. Commissioner Looney?
Yes, I know this is out of order, but I kind of overlooked it. As far as the MTP 24, which is the focus of the, the case, I, I looked at the acknowledgement, acknowledgement page, I can barely say that, but the, the Citizens Advisory Committee for AMATS is, is listed there and there's a dozen people on that committee. And as a representative of PCC, I, I guess I've been in, in that position to be on that board. And so I guess I have been involved through the process, meeting with AMATS, Craig Lyon and Aaron, who are here today, I guess. And so I, I want to make that clear. So I guess I've been, I've been part of the process, just on advisory level for this document.
All right. It sounds as though you do not have a direct involvement nor direct investment in the outcome of this agenda item, though. Is that correct? Or monetary gain?
That's true.
All right. Then unless I hear an objection, I would move that you would be able to participate. Any objection? Seeing no objection, you'll be able to participate. Moving on to case 2020-0134, can we hear the staff report?
Yes. Hello. Thank you. So before you today is the 2040 LRTP, the Long Range Transportation Plan for the municipality of Anchorage. This plan is a copy of the AMATS 2040 MTP Metropolitan Transportation Plan. So I'm going to just go over a quick synopsis of what the MTP went through for its development. And I want to apologize if I say too many acronyms, please just, somebody motion, that's my life, so I just kind of gloss over them sometimes. So the 2040 MTP was developed with a 20-year horizon, so 2020, about 2019, 2020 to 2040. So it's a long-range plan that's looking at the next 20 years of transportation projects within the municipality of Anchorage. I will note that this is limited to the Anchorage Bowl, Hillside Eagle River, Chugak, Akutna, and, yeah, those areas. It does not include Girdwood or anything south of Anchorage from Potter Marsh Way Station to the end of the muni border. So the MTP was developed, first started to be developed with the goals and objectives. A public process was involving about four to six months where goals were developed and put out for the public to respond to. Staff accepted comments and then responded to those comments and provided recommendation to the AMATS committees. Next, the performance measures were developed. These performance measures are in line with the federal requirements that FHWA, the Federal Highway Administration, and the Federal Transit Administration, FTA, have out there. Those performance measures, goals and objectives, were then used to help develop the screening criteria. The screening criteria is used to help review projects for their inclusion in the plan. After the screening criteria was developed, three public meetings were held, including a three-day charrette, where we solicited comments from members of the public on what kind of projects they would like to see in the plan. So this is roadway projects, transit projects, non-motorized projects, basically anything that anyone had an idea for, we accepted and it was going to be moved into the next phase, where we then started working on scenario modeling, transportation modeling, and using the scoring criteria. So we scored the projects, ranked them, and then we did a scenario modeling to look at three different scenarios for the transportation system. After that was done, fiscal constraint was applied to the scenarios, because one of the requirements for the long, for the MTP is it has to be fiscally constrained, which means we have to look at, in the next 20 years, what funding are we anticipating getting for transportation improvements? This funding comes from the local, the federal, and the state. Once we do that, we do kind of a, an analysis on what we have received in the pla, the past and then what we anticipate in receiving, and take that fiscal information and apply it to the projects. Because there's only so many projects we can fund in the next 20 years. So after the fiscal constraint was developed, it was brought forward to the committees and it was developed into the public review draft. The public review draft was released for 45-day period initially and then was later extended further because it was recognized that there were a lot of comments and we wanted more time for members of the public to review it, because it's a pretty lengthy project, lengthy document and project. After comments were received, staff reviewed them and we received a little over 460 comments during this time period, which staff spent some time to review and provide recommendations. Additionally, staff was able to meet with various government agencies and resource agencies, so for example, the Corps of Engineer, EPA, et cetera, to get their input on this document. One of the requirements for the MTP is it also has to have an air quality conformity determination, which basically looks at the document and looks at the projects anticipated to be developed over the next 20 years to ensure that they are not going to degrade the air quality of our, of our area. So once that was all done, it was finally brought to the AMATS Policy Committee for approval in June of 2020. And then FHWA and FTA approved the document in August of 2020. After that was done, staff took the document, put the LRTP cover on it, and then submitted it through the process to get it before you today. During October and November, 155 comments were received on the document and staff responded to all 155 of those comments. Two comments were received after the deadline. So we did not, staff did not respond to them, but they are included in the packet before you. What's included in the packet before you is a link to the 2040 LRTP document, the comment response summary. So that shows the comment, the date, who submitted it, and then staff's response to it. Then there are three additional attachments. The first two, attachment A and B, are comments that were submitted that were too large to put into the comment response summary. So they were attached so you could see the whole thing in its entirety. Attachment C is a document that was sent to AMATS staff during the MTP development that shows the MTP goals and objectives and then the Climate Action Plan, the Anchorage Climate Action Plan goals that they have and how they match up. So it was a review that was done by Shayna Kilcoin's group, where she wanted to show how the two documents are interacting and with each other and how they're consistent with each other. And the reason that's included is because there was a comment or two comments in this round that document, that talked about how the 2040 LRTP is not considering or consistent with the Climate Action Plan and we wanted to show that it is in, is, in certain parts. And then the last attachment is also the late comments that were submitted to staff that do not have staff response. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing no questions from staff, we can open up to public testimony. I believe we have three individuals on the phone wishing to make testimony. wishing to make testimony.
Hello?
Hi, is this Nancy Pease?
It is.
This is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for your public testimony on Case 2020-0134. Are you calling as an individual or a representative of a group?
As an individual.
Okay, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. If you could state your name for the record, you can begin.
Hello, I'm Nancy Pease. This evening, I'm asking you to postpone approval of this LRTP for two months while you address its inadequacies. Perhaps the most grave deficiency in this LRTP is the lack of the quantified performance standards that are typical in most metropolitan plans, and specifically, the lack of greenhouse gas emission standards. Two important statistics. The Anchorage Climate Action Plan set a specific reduction target of 40% by 2040 for greenhouse gases. Second important statistic, in Anchorage, motor vehicle fuel accounts for 53% of our greenhouse gas emissions. Anchorage cannot do its part to mitigate climate change without committing this LRTP to greenhouse gas emission targets and tracking. Staff says on page 10, "We can't set a target without a whole lot of baseline studies." But we have a target, 40% by 2040. So, my number one request is to put that target into the LRTP. Second, create a planning and zoning subcommittee and consult with expert transportation consultants to compare this plan to progressive municipal plans from other cities, specifically Boulder, San Francisco, and the state of Virginia. Third, set a six-to-12-month timeline for planning staff to develop and insert into the LRTP the following performance measures: greenhouse gas emissions, mode share, reducing vehicle miles traveled, promotion of compact land use, and measures for equitable access. And I'm talking about quantifiable measures. Fourth, on the same six-to-12-month timeline, revise the project scoring criteria so that these factors can have scoring power. Fifth, put in a placeholder for the projects that will soon be identified in the pending non-motorized transportation plan. In addition, there are several specific projects you should take a look at, specifically Midtown Congestion Relief and Highway to Highway Freeway. All those projects have poor cost benefit, because 85% of traffic in that area is not through traffic, doesn't need a freeway. There will be a major loss of residential and commercial land. Also, look at Project 207, Glen Highway Frontage Roads, Muldoon to Highland Road. Delete them. Very poor cost-benefit returns. There is no need for local access to military lands. It's a security risk. This is an inefficient way to add lanes. Third, fund commuter rail studies. The current governor disbanded the Blue Ribbon Commission on commuter rail, but that's a short-term decision, and this is a 20-to-40-year plan, and rail is part of sustainable transportation. In closing, I'd like to come back to your role as commissioners. This is an awesome responsibility, but it's a 20-year plan. You have the power to make this LRTP an inflection point in our transportation planning and climate change action. So, take your time, do it right. Do not rubber stamp the MTP 2040, which, despite a charade of public involvement, had very little responsiveness to public concerns. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I do not see any questions in the queue. So, I believe that will be all. Thank you, Ms. Pease.
Thank you. This is Cheryl.
Hi Cheryl, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for your public testimony on Case 2020-0134.
Exactly, mhm.
And before we get started, if you could mute your background, it will help us hear you more clearly.
That means I'm going to have to, is there a way for me to hang on until you come back to me so that I can hear the discussion?
We'll take your public testimony and then get off the line, and then you can unmute and unpause what you're watching.
I'm not hearing discussion, so I'm happy to do this.
Okay, are you calling as an individual or a representative of a group?
I'm a representative of a group.
Okay, you'll have five minutes for your testimony, then. If you could state your name for the record again, you can begin. And if you can also state which group you're a representative of.
This is Cheryl Richardson, and I'm representing the Anchorage Citizens Coalition.
You may begin.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to testify tonight. Our planners were going to simply copy the mandated Metropolitan Transportation Plan and put an LRTP cover on it. But then they realized the LRTP needed to do a better job representing local priorities. And they invited the public to recommend policy changes. This is the first time I can remember an Anchorage transportation planner making such an ask over many decades of work, and I greatly appreciate it. But because this LRTP spends over half its $2.6 billion budget on huge disruptive freeway projects, the Anchorage Citizens Coalition asks you to delay adoption of the plan for at least two months so the administration can do a more thorough job reconsidering Anchorage's transportation priorities. We ask you to recommend creation of a Blue Ribbon Committee to establish recommendations within the next six to 12 months for three things, for sure: actually linking land use and transportation policies and investments. Secondly, establishing 21st-century economic equity, health, and safety objections for transportation spending, and, finally, reducing greenhouse gases from transportation sources. Just as background by itself, electrifying vehicles will not reduce greenhouse gas emissions far enough. We will also have to shift a large percent of our car trips into non-motorized trips. And that will mean local, state, and federal investments will need to be tightly coordinated among Anchorage 2020, Anchorage LUP 2040, and transportation plans. One reason I'm hopeful for major change in federal policies and spending has been the new president's commitment that every federal department, including transportation, will combat climate change, not just the EPA. Anchorage needs affordable housing near jobs, and we need real transit, bicycle, and walk options for our citizens. Unfortunately, our MTP and this LRTP kick those cans down the road again without clear timelines for addressing key issues. I've got a couple of examples with policies that need changing. For instance, this LRTP ignores people mover service improvements, quote, "until a permanent funding source is established within the municipality." That's response seven. Excuse me. Instead, we recommend people mover will identify a variety of transit funding sources and recommend a package to the Anchorage Assembly within six months. Secondly, staff seems to automatically support major freeway projects in response number 11, which completely misses the need to reduce vehicle miles traveled and greatly improve transit alternatives for commuters. Number three, linking land use and transportation. Staff response number 10 postpones tightening the relationships into a hazy distant future. It's been much too long on that issue. Number four, to leave environmental decision-making to the Anchorage's Climate Action Plan, response number 21, is at best incomplete, and at worst, does not contribute to measuring transportation's greenhouse gas emissions: acres of asphalt, heat islands, damaged or lost natural landscape, roadway discharge into waterways. One obvious strategy is to begin reducing greenhouse gases while Anchorage's calculations are still being developed. The LRTP can borrow from other cities more detailed plans to build a list of short-term actions that can begin immediately. We need to pick the low-hanging fruit and direct resources to nationally-agreed-upon strategies, including, as before, infill redevelopment served by roadways designed for transit, bikes, and walking. So, these are not new messages to you, but this is a major opportunity for you to take advantage of this pause in the transportation planning process and make some good, solid recommendations to the Assembly. And we would very much appreciate that, and I thank you for your time and your consideration tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no questions in the queue, can we go to our final telephonic public testimony?
Hello?
Hi, is this Barbara Carlson?
This is.
This is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for your public testimony on Case 2020-0134. You'll have five minutes. Oops, sorry. You'll have five minutes to provide your testimony. If you could state your name for the record and the organization that you represent, you can begin.
Barbara Carlson, C-A-R-L-S-O-N. I'm speaking on behalf of Friends of the Anchorage Coastal Wildlife Refuge, also known as FAR, about Project Number 601. To avoid confusion, my husband, Michael Carlson, and I also sent comments as private citizens about Project Number 411. But I'm not before you today about that unless you have questions and there is time. Commissioners and municipal staff members, the mission of Friends of the Anchorage Coastal Wildlife Refuge is to preserve the integrity and biological diversity of the Anchorage Coastal Wildlife Refuge. This easily-damaged subarctic salt marsh system supports an unusual diversity of plants, birds, mammals, and invertebrates, and is of continental conservation importance.
The proximity of the refuge to Alaska's largest city make it important for public education and enjoyment, but also make it highly vulnerable. A multi-use trail built through or immediately adjacent to the refuge would significantly affect wildlife or other refuge resources. We recommend that at Table 76, the entire row that refers to MTP Number 601 be deleted. We provided comments, questions, and concerns on March 6, 2020, and again on October 28, 2020. These were prepared with Rick Sinnett, a current board member who is a knowledgeable former Area 2 biologist with the Alaska State Department of Fish and Game. We have once again reviewed staff response to our concerns and find the answers to be unsatisfactory to us. We stand by our concerns and recommendations. We needed to see the draft non-motorized plan when preparing comments, but were told that it was not available because staff was still doing things with it. When I am finished, can anyone tell me if it is out for public review yet? We support the Anchorage Citizens Coalition request that the Planning and Zoning Commission delay adoption of the 2040 LRTP for two months for the administration to reconsider Anchorage's transportation priorities. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. I see no comments in the queue, so that is all for your time. Moving to those who are here in person, if you would like to testify, please state your name for the record. And if you are representing on behalf of an organization, you must state what that organization is. Again, a reminder that you should speak to Case 2020-0134.
Thank you, Chairperson Bailey and those members that are here this evening in person. So, we're talking about the Anchorage Long-Term Transit Plan.
Sorry, can you state your name for the record?
Oh, my apologies. It is Niall Williams. First name is spelled N-I-A-L for the record. I represent 1776, Alaska. I would like to first add an amendment to the transit plan that there be absolutely no restrictions on the choice of modality of what transportation an individual shall seek to use, nor on the frequency of travel by the individual as freedom of movement and liberty of movement is one of our guaranteed rights by our Creator. Secondly, I would like to add an amendment that we petition for the closure of all bars, marijuana shops, distilleries, breweries, and liquor stores within a 2,500-foot distance of any church, school, hospital, any transit route, any bus stop or any bus station. Children should not be close to the sale and proliferation of marijuana, liquor, or any other intoxicating devices. Next, I would like to add an amendment that all transit should have gender-specific bathrooms. God made men, and God made women. You use the bathroom of the genitalia of your birth. I would like to speak to a couple of the previous testifiers. Ms. Pease spoke about the effects of greenhouse gases. I would like to add an amendment that all people wear plugs in their rectal cavity as to prevent the release of methane gas. I would also like to speak to the fact that we should restrict the sale of meat in the municipality of Anchorage, as when you harvest cow parts and cow meat, they are the number-one producers of methane gas, which affects the Van Allen Belts and the way that our planet is globally heating. I would also like to say that a major cause of global warming, as is man-caused, would be 5G towers. 5G towers seek to...
Again, I would like to remind you that you should be speaking to the issue of the transportation plan.
Okay. I would like to further dispel the notion that transit needs to be walking, needs to be electrified cars or electrified buses. As a former resident of Park City, Utah, they had the nation's inaugural electric bus plan. They spent $726,000 on 11 electric buses. They bought the first generation and then the second generation. These buses are manufactured by a corporation out of New Mexico. They do not work in cold climates. So, what happens when the electric bus will drive under the magnetic charger? The magnetic charger will connect to the top of the bus. Well, they had a lot of issues because when there's snow or ice on the ground, it will affect the height of the bus. And so, the magnet would not be able to properly deploy and attach to the bus. Secondly, I would like to say that any minor child that's on a transit bus should be accompanied by a parent or guardian. A parent or guardian would be defined as their legal parent or guardian, not someone that's taking the role of them. Also, I would like to stipulate that all buses should have carefully, all transit buses for the Anchorage School District should have carefully-vetted school monitors that are on the buses to be able to combat Anchorage Ordinance 2020-65, which seeks to continue to erode the individual with stipulating that men are becoming women, and women are becoming men. We need to really stand up against this. Our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, He only created two different kinds of humans. We are either male, or we are female. Finally, I would like to stipulate that there should be a more representative payment by anyone that's on a public transit system. $2 per ride or $5 per day is insufficient to cover the cost. Too much tax dollars are used for the public transit system. 10 seconds to spare. Thank you very much.
Does anyone else wish to testify this time?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Name is Dustin Darden, spelled D-U-S-T-I-N-D-A-R-D-N, representing Infowars.com. So, we're talking about this transportation plan, and I'm reminded of some of the people who spoke so passionately about effects of the environment. And there's a little town that I reminded of in correlation to Anchorage, Alaska. It's called Wuhan, China. And it's directly related
The matter at issue currently is the Municipality of Anchorage Transportation Plan in Review.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Chair. So what does it all boil down to? Where does it, where's the correlation? Where do our paths cross back to the subject at hand, the transportation plan, and how we save our dear ozone with these passionate women that called in? Well, we could, we could do like Nile said, and/or we could start standing for our constitutional liberties. And this is directly related to this, this plan, because all plans have an agenda. And the agenda of the current administration is lockstep in what the committees, the municipal employees are directed to coincide with, whether that be bleaching down of the doorknob, or whether that be covering up one's oxygen supply and communication device. Everything is connected, and the transportation plans are federally funded, and the feds are controlled, at this point, by their debtors. Our primary debtor are the Communist Chinese, who are laughing in the backgrounds as we capitulate to their tyrannical infiltration of every local structure, and that's-
I'm going to give you one more warning that you have to speak to the matter at hand, which is the Transportation Plan in Review. This is your final warning. If you do not continue speaking about the plan, then I will cut off your time.
Communist Chinese sympathizers make themselves very evidently known in how they sympathize to them. If we don't stand for our constitutional liberties, and we let women call in and talk about how these both-
All right. I see that we are still not addressing the issue of the transportation planning program. So in order to respect the time of everyone here, we will move on. Looking into the audience, I am trying to see if we have any other individuals wishing to make public testimony at this time. Seeing no members looking to make public comment. Planning and zoning commissioners, what is the will of the body? Sorry, staff, did you have a rebuttal or wish to make any comments in regard to what was previously heard?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Any questions from the commissioners? I had a question. I forget which member of the public made this statement, but they mentioned that the non-motorized transportation plan wasn't available before they were able to make comments. Can you elaborate on that further?
Yes, the AMAT's non-motorized plan is currently in draft format. It was being finalized, developed, and finalized for public review. At the last technical advisory committee meeting last week, they recommended it be released for, I believe, a 60-day public comment period. So next week, the policy committee will look at it and make a recommendation whether to release it for the public, or more work needs to be done. So during development of the MTP LRTP, the non-motorized plan itself was not completed at that point. And one of the stances we take is we don't incorporate draft documents into our plan because they are subject to change still, and sometimes they can radically alter between the draft version and the final version. So for the 2040, it did not incorporate the draft version of the non-motorized plan, but once that's approved, and if it's available for the 2050, it will be reviewed and incorporated where possible into the 2050 or later plans, depending on when it gets approved.
And then a follow-up is, just as a matter of policy, because that wasn't released at the time, how are those comments supposed to be incorporated before we approve this plan?
Do you mean the comments on the non-motorized plan itself? Well, they probably won't be incorporated into this plan. They'll be looked at and incorporated into the non-motorized plan itself, into the non-motorized plan. Once that's finalized, it can be used to help inform the next update of this plan. And so any comments that were given there and addressed and approved can be input for the next one, but it's, it's a little too late right now to take those comments for this plan here.
So as another follow-up, so would they then have to wait for 20, like the 2040, 2060 transportation plan?
So the, the plan is updated every four years. So the 2050, which is the next plan, is actually underway right now. So no, they wouldn't have to wait very long, maybe a year or two, depending upon when the consultant can be brought on board and we can get started on the plan. And the policy committee already passed a resolution requiring that staff, which we were going to do anyways, but it's now spelled out a little better so people can have more confidence in it, that we will look at any plan updated since the 2040 was approved, which would include things like the non-motorized plan in the next version for the 2050. So it will be looked at.
Thank you. That is helpful. Any other questions for staff from the commission? Seeing no other questions from staff, I just want to address a couple. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Spinelli. I'm looking off two different queues right now.
Yeah, we heard a couple of public comments asking us to delay the implementation of the plan, and I'm going to apologize if you covered this in the work session, but is there any reason that we need to approve it tonight, or is there any objection to delaying it?
So the only consideration, or a couple considerations I would give, is delaying the development of this plan would also delay any input it can give into the next update for the 2050 MTP. So for example, if this 2040 LRTP wants to make some changes to what projects are in it, what policies are in it, and it's delayed six months, a year, or more, then more than likely that would not be incorporated into the 2050 MTP. Because as I said, we don't look at draft documents, we only look at final documents. Another consideration is we have a consultant on board right now for the 2040, and their contract ends March of 2021, so in a few months. And we do not have the ability to extend that contract or ask for any additional money for it. So at this point, we're kind of limping along on limited funding and time. So a six-month, a year-long delay is kind of outside of what we, as AMATs, can afford, and a different funding source and different staff would have to be brought on board to do any kind of additional work on this plan, outside of what we have recommended in the staff comment response summary.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing no other questions from staff, what is the will of the body? And just as a clarification to help make this easier for us in making a motion, we would, the Planning and Zoning Commission would be, if they would like it to proceed, would be moving it to the Assembly. Another alternative that was addressed could be a move to postpone. Would that be a correct assessment?
Yes, I asked that if you move it to the Assembly, you also, if possible, include something about the comment response summary, because staff did the comment response summary with their recommendations in there, and we would like to bring that forward to the Assembly as well, because it responds to a number of the comments we've heard in public. Or, yes, like you said, you could delay it.
Thank you for that guidance. Commissioners, I'd like to remind you that I can't make a motion, so I'm looking for some help here. Oh, Commissioner Looney, do you have a comment?
Actually, it's more like I'll make a motion. In the case of 2020-0134, to approve the 2040 LRTP, a move that we approve the plan and accompanying the comment, comment response summary to go with it too, in the packet.
And just to make sure I have the wording right for staff, it would be that we recommend that we, we are recommending the plan to the Assembly. Is that correct?
Recommend approval of the plan, along with the comment response summary included in the staff packet. That's right.
Does that motion work for staff? Does that-
Yes, it does. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Looney. I believe we have a second by Commissioner Winchester. Would anyone like to speak to the motion?
Actually, I'll start out of a can. Essentially, I definitely appreciate the testimony we heard tonight. Actually, there's some very thoughtful input, and actually, the, it's, it's hard to undervalue all the comments that have gone into this, all the different public outreach efforts. And the packet has numerous comments, and it looks like there's already well-thought-out responses to them. And the fact that there's, this plan is going to be followed right up with another plan, and actually, what Aaron just mentioned just two, three minutes ago, how there's already the replacement for this plan is in the works. It's, it's a relief to know that things like the, the non-motorized transportation plan, which is almost ready, even if it's not taken into account right now in this one, it can be part of the next plan. So this looks like a great document to, to move forward for the transportation for the Anchorage area at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Looney. Anyone else wishing to make a comment? Seeing no one else in the queue, I would just like to echo Commissioner Looney's comments. I appreciate all the work that went into this draft, as it is something that is going to be built on in the future. There are a couple of items that I would like to see addressed more explicitly. I addressed it in the work session earlier that I believe Goal 5 needs to be more effectively flushed out to make sure that those issues of social justice and equity are addressed more directly and that they are, can be targeted by more measurable outcomes. Additionally, I think that a lot of the people that had concerns about greenhouse gas emissions, I think it is indirectly reflected in this plan, as far as reducing traffic congestion, eliminating traffic time and amount of driving miles. All of those are correlated, but again, it would be helpful to see how that fits into the other goals that we have, such as the reducing 40% by 2040. So I think there are ways that we can progress on this in the future, but this is a very comprehensive look at that in a very good detail, laying out for where we could see that progress being made. So I want to thank staff. Seeing no one else in the queue, call for a vote.
Mr. O'Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Strike?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Winchester?
Yes.
Ms. Krishna?
Yes.
And Chair Bailey?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that motion passes. Before we move on to our adjournment, I just want to address one issue, which is, I was just informed that our staff member, Mr. Colin Hodges, is going to be leaving us, and I just want to applaud, he's not in the building anymore, because he has better things to do than hang around with us now that he's leaving. But I want to thank him for all of his time. I know he hasn't been with the staff for a very long time, but ever since he's been here, I've really appreciated all the staff reports. He's always been very enthusiastic, and you would not guess by how soft-spoken he is, by how knowledgeable he is to back that up. So I wish him all the best in his future endeavors, and we are sure going to miss him around here. So I want to give a big old thanks to Mr. Hodges. Moving on, I believe, oh, there is someone typing in the queue. We have here, here, so just a recognition that Mr. Hodges is going to be missed. Moving on, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Spinelli. Is there a second? So many seconds in the queue. I'm going to take the one from Commissioner O'Quinn. And seeing no objection, we are adjourned.